Yes, I can hear you now.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Vice Mayor Wade, City Council members, Madam Mayor Smith in her absence. My name is Rose Houston. I'm an associate minister at the Mount Mariah AME Church where Arnold L. Jackson is the pastor. I consider it a privilege and an honor to be called to do the invocation on this evening. Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather today to discuss the matters of our community, we humbly ask for your guidance, your wisdom to lead with compassion, integrity, making our decisions that benefit all our citizens. Father, you declare in your word that all flesh belong to you. We ask you for your wisdom as we begin this meeting and we acknowledge that we need not only your wisdom, but your insights and we welcome your presence among us. As King Solomon in Scripture asks for a discerning heart to govern your people, I pray the same request for our city leaders, for our mayor, our vice mayor, our city council members, our city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk, our chief fire captain, our police chief and all that works under the leadership of the city of Maricopa. Lord, we ask you to guide our discussions and our decisions, helping us to seek best for all involved. Oh God, we come with gratitude and thankful heart. We thank you for being the God that you are, a God of love. We thank you for keeping watch over our city and all its residents and all the business... and all the business within our boundaries. Your word declares, unless the Lord builds a house, it builders labor in vain. Unless the Lord watch over city, the watchma stays alert in vain. Dear Lord, we continue to ask you to pray and we thank you for our proud history and our prosperous future. It is in Jesus' name that we offer this prayer on this evening and all in attendance said amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please receive it. Madam Clerk, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Gettle?
Present.
Councilmember Nor?
Present.
Councilmember Learman?
Here.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
Here.
Vice Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. There are no proclamations or agenda for tonight, so I'll go right to the report for the mayor and ask if there are any offerings from the city council. Councilmember Marsh?
Good evening, everybody. On the 21st of February, there was a meeting of the State Transportation Board in Surprise. It was pretty well attended for Maricopa. Mayor Nancy, Bill Robertson, Adam Leach, Ron Angarami, Tina Dugan and Supervisor Vitello spoke on their favorite topic, the 347. And I think the board understood. They got the message. But Mayor Nancy can expand on that, I'm sure. On the 24th, there was a meeting of the Pennell Partnership Water Resource Committee. And on the 25th, the Pennell Partnership Government Relations Committee. I was attending both. On the 26th, with 10 other Phoenix area city leaders, I participated in a market research focus group for the State Board of Regents. On the 27th, I was vice chair of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals at the county level. Several cases and one appeal were processed. And the county issued each of us board members a new iPad. Please don't tell my Microsoft friends I have an iPad. On the 1st of March, I attended the annual Master Gardener's Plant Sale at the U of A Maricopa Ag Center. That's always a big deal around here. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Tonight, I have the... I want to recognize our public safety. I want to thank the Maricopa Police Department for being our heroes and for putting your lives on the line for us every single day. Continued prayers go to the officer who was injured this past week and he remains in my prayers and my heart every day. And I also want to thank our firefighters who just celebrated 20 years of service and who serve us bravely and proudly every single day. A story I heard at the award ceremony this past weekend was that when the city was becoming incorporated 20 years ago, there was some discussion and even some advice given to the leadership at that time that we could be okay with a volunteer fire department or a paid volunteer fire department. And I heard that our leadership rejected that immediately and decided at that time that we needed to have a full-fledged fire department. And so they hired seven firefighters and we had one fire truck. And I just have a lot of pride in that. I'm really proud of our former leaders and I'm really proud of our public safety department and how Maricopa just doesn't settle for okay. We just don't. We have a long history of pushing forward and wanting the best and having foresight. And even in OFAR, when I moved here, we had 3,000 people at that time to just say, "It's not okay. A volunteer department's not going to be good enough for us." And I think this council continues to have that same mindset of, "We want the best and we want it at a speed and a pace that is fitting for our city." So, just a lot of pride this last week and I just want to thank our public safety from the bottom of my heart. And we should do that every day, but especially this last week, I was just really moved. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Nothing? Nothing else? Okay, thank you. Moving forward, we work. We have a call to the public? I'm sorry, yes ma'am?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a few things that I'd like to share, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so, State Route 347 is the name of the game during... Starting in January, I mean, it's been on our discussion points for 16 to 20 years. But at this point, it's really prime time for the city of Maricopa to work hard to get State Route 347 officially, fully funded on the five-year plan. So, many things have been happening, especially at the capital level and then at the State Transportation Board meeting. As Councilmember Marsh indicated, I had a group of residents, people who love our city, want to have an impact, want to make a difference, especially for State Route 347, attended a senate meeting with me to speak in support of SB 1617, which is a bill that moves 49 million from 2028 to 2026 for the Riggs Road 347 overpass. Very important that we get that moved up. You might ask why? The reason is, is that the design is due to be done in about Q1 of 2026. So, if these funds are moved up to 2026, that means that we can actually go out for bid because we have the funding for Riggs Road 347 overpass. The timing is impeccable, it's perfect. It's been worked hard by many, many people, staff, city council, these residents and the 1,400 residents who have sent in emails. Wonderful. And I'm happy to say during that committee meeting, that bill was passed and it moves forward onto the process. Another opportunity, a bunch of the same people went to the House this time in support of HB 2557. I am happy to say that is $16 million for State Route 347, which was a bill that was presented by Representative Lopez. And today, it passed its third reading in the House. And so that's exciting as well. And then another... These same people went to the ADA State Transportation Board meeting, all the way in Surprise, and spoke about how important it is because of the perfect timing of the design being finished and having this entire project put on the five-year plan during this ADA's State Transportation Plan, Five-Year Plan. It's important, the timing is perfect, so we're working hard. So, you might be asking, "What can you do?" And just so you know, the public feedback opportunity just hit the streets today. And so, hopefully, our city will be doing a newsletter. In Maricopa posted an informational piece on this that links you to the public feedback form. And I'm asking everyone who hears this, I'm sharing this with everybody, I'm asking everyone who hears it to share it, but go fill out the form. Maricopa needs to be heard in regards to why State Route 347 is important to have on this year's five-year plan for ADA. So, please look for that information. You can find it on my mayoral page for Facebook and you can find it on In Maricopa. And then I hope our city is going to be doing a newsletter item on it as well. And because I'm calling in, I think I'll stop there. But many wonderful things happening in the city and I'm delighted to be a part of it. And I know all those residents that have helped are delighted to be a part of it as well as the rest of council and our staff, wonderful staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give me an opportunity to slow down and breathe. I'd like to offer something that I was participating in. One of the nice things about being Vice Mayor is when the mayor is not available, you get a chance to do things that probably wouldn't get a chance to do when they call on the mayor. I had an opportunity to throw out the first ball along with Chief Goodman for the Baseball and Softball League, Phoenix... Maricopa Phoenix, excuse me. Maricopa Softball and Baseball Leagues. There was probably 600 kids out there and all different shapes and sizes and colors of their uniforms. And it was a great opportunity to experience that opportunity with the kids. It was a lot of fun. And one of the things that I note about that is that the kids were showing a great deal of respect for their parents. And I think that's a nice thing as a parent, to have your child show you the kind of respect and admiration that you were seeing from the kids out there. So, it was a wonderful thing. So, thank you, Chief Goodman, for attending as well. It was a funny event. Next, I'd like to have any comments from the city manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I would actually like to turn some time, if it's okay, over to our city clerk for an announcement in a minute.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor Wade, councilmembers. Just wanted to announce that after just over 12 years of service, our deputy city clerk, Adriana Carpio, has accepted the position of city clerk for the city of Casa Grande, effective March 31st. So, just wanted to thank Adriana for her service and wish her the very best. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Congratulations. So, next to the call to the public, anyone wishing to speak can come forward and address the council. Please make sure that you submitted a speaker card prior to, if you like. But if not, you still have the opportunity to come forward and speak. I do have one speaker card for this evening that was turned in and that was from Peg, Shabados Peg. Would you like to come forward? Bless you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Mayor Smith, council. Congratulations, Ariana. Tonight, I'm here to do some thank yous. The first thank you is thank you to Maricopa PD. We have some amazing men and women that work for that department. It was a tough week, kind of been where they are. And please keep the officers, all of them, in your thoughts and prayers. My second thank you is to Maricopa Fire and Medical and happy 20th anniversary. Can't believe it's been two decades already. That went by fast. Again, amazing men and women and some outstanding volunteers. So, thank you for your service. My third thank you is probably one that's not going to be too popular with people, but I need to share it with you because I think you made the right choice in not moving forward with the Arts Center in the old PD headquarters. I do share in the disappointment that we're not going to have what we have been talked about conceptually. But I also think we would have been more disappointed had we done it and done it wrong or had settled for less than optimal. We'll get there. It's just we still have so many needs. And I was privileged enough as the Chair of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Committee to attend all the arts needs assessment with the community stakeholders. When it was announced that the lighting and sound package alone was half a million, I knew we were headed in the right direction thinking-wise, but it also didn't make sense to do something that wasn't going to satisfy the end users. So, thank you for that decision, but I do have a suggestion. What can we do with that building that might be the best use of it? Our focus for years has been economic development, development services, permitting, planning. I suggest that we turn that building into the Economic Development Services Center. It would be a one-stop shop. It would accommodate all the different departments that have needs to come in and out of that building. It would also be a place where we could showcase the Maricopa story, let people know the potential for land development and project development here and really showcase what we have to offer as a destination city. So, I'm hoping that you'll at least give it some thought and conversation. But again, thank you for making the decisions that you do. And if you do see any of our public safety members out and about, please tell them thank you. It's not always an easy job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next, we turn to the consent agreement. Excuse me. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments at this time? I'm seeing that we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Next in the comment agenda, I have requests from the staff to table item 7.3. Council, do you have any desires to move forward? You want to move forward with the table?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and second, that we table item 7.3. So, therefore, I'd like to move from item 7.1 to 7.8 minus 7.3. Is there any favor to that motion or to those items? Yes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Approved. Motion to approve by Councilmember Marsh, second by Councilmember Nor. Next, is item 7.3? Vice Mayor, would you like to take a vote?
Do we have to vote on these things?
Yes, yes. Move in second? Is there a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next is item 7.3. We've taken care of that. This takes us to our regular agenda.
Vice Mayor, can we get a motion and a second to vote on tabling 7.3?
Yeah, actually, we had, we just didn't vote. We had a motion and a second, but we didn't vote, yes. So, we've been motioning a second to table item 7.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. So, we move to the regular agenda and public hearings. Let's take this to the regular agenda now. First, item on agenda is presentation from Chief Goodman, providing a 2024... She, Maricopa Police Department Annual Report. Chief Goodman?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wade. Mayor Smith, Vice Mayor Wade and members of the city council, thank you for allowing me some time today to give you our annual report for 2024. We telling the story of public safety of the police department. And I thought it was very fitting that we opened with a photograph, a beautiful photograph of our brand-new police building and emergency communication center. That building is meeting our needs and will continue to meet our needs for the next decade and beyond. It's a beautiful facility, 33,000 square feet. And I'd just like to thank the council for its overt support of this project, making it a reality and helping us to move into the facility. So, thank you very much. I'd like to tell the story of the police department by telling the story of the call for service. So, a majority of our activity is driven by our community members. And as you can see, our communication center is very busy. Our community members call the police department for all kinds of different things, emergencies, general questions and general calls for service. In 2024, our communications operators answered almost 70,000 calls for service that came into our emergency communication center. That is a lot of calls and they handled all of them professionally and very, very well. I'd like to point out that when someone calls 911, 99.5% of the time, that call is answered within 15 seconds. The national standard for 911 calls is 15 seconds and we've exceeded that standard. The standard is 90%. So, that's a real point of pride for our emergency communication center, just handling all those calls that come in at the same time and also paying attention to those 911 lines is critically important. I'm really, really proud of that 99.5% percentage. About 18% of the calls that come into the communication centers get transferred. Around 5,700 of those calls were transferred to our public safety partners over at the fire department. And they do an amazing job of getting out and assisting us with those public safety needs. This year, we launched a really innovative and collaborative project. I'd like to give credit to our public safety team, which includes Micah Godett, who's behind me, is our deputy city manager of public safety, and Angie Crook, who at that time was serving over in the public safety department. She is now... of public safety, and Angie Crook, who at that time was serving over in the public safety department. She is now our police executive administrator. But she was really the driving force behind making this project come to fruition. I'd like to say that is a groundbreaking groundbreaking mental health program in Pinal County. It embeds two mental health professionals within our communication center. And they assist with diverting mental health calls so that police officers and our fire department personnel do not have to respond. So unless a person calls and they're in immediate crisis, they are diverted to the proper to the proper folks who can hook them up with the services that they need. And we don't need to respond a uniform officer or a firefighter out there. Also this year, innovative, something else that's innovative that we did was our dispatcher academy. We launched our first one. It's a two-week immersive training program. It helps them to navigate our technology in our communication center, teaches them how to take a call, teaches them about city geography, and helps onboard them into the department to make them feel as though they're part of the team. So after the call comes into our dispatch center, it goes out to our patrol officers. And this year, I'm proud to say that we added a K nine officer to our cadre of patrol. And our officers have been very visible in the community, which was one of my goals when I became the police chief, was to start fully immersing our police department in community policing. So you'll see up there that those are a couple of examples of our officers really engaging with the community. We do Red Ribbon Week in collaboration with the Maricopa Unified School District and also one of our charter schools here in town. And we also do Read Across America to try to encourage literacy for our young people. As you can see, we reserved, we received just short of thirty-three thousand five hundred calls for service in two thousand twenty four. Around nineteen thousand were citizen-generated. Fourteen thousand of those calls were generated by our police officers, which means they are out there and they are active in our community, contacting people, doing traffic stops, doing pedestrian stops, contacting our community members. That is of critical importance to the public safety of the city of Maricopa. When our police officers get out of their cars and contact people, that means they're staying engaged and learning about what this community needs. We wrote about forty-six hundred reports this year. And we made just over twenty-two hundred arrests and crime is down one percent per capita. Our top calls for service remain related to parking. I'd like to point out that welfare check is one of our highest calls for service. That shows that our community members are engaged with one another and taking care of one another. It shows how much this community really cares for one another and their neighbors. They notice when things are wrong. And I often say that the people in our community know their neighborhoods the best. And I encourage people to call us when they see something that they feel is out of the ordinary. Those are those welfare checks. They also report to us suspicious people, vehicles, or circumstances, also super important to our crime-fighting efforts. And then, one of our calls for service is attempting to locate those those items. So, we stay busy doing that. But I just wanted to point out the high level of engagement that our community has because community policing is a two-way street. We do depend upon our community to help us keep Maricopa safe and they do a great job of that. So after a call goes through Patrol Division, it goes to our Criminal Investigation Division, also known as detectives. And I'd like to point out that we added some investigators to our Criminal Investigation Division this year or last year, which enhances our ability to really dig into and solve crimes. So rather than really manage cases, I want our detectives to really investigate cases with the goal of solving them. It seems like a really simple goal, but it's very, very easy for our detectives to get overwhelmed with cases when they come in. So what I've tasked our CID leadership to do is to really evaluate cases and then assign the detectives and manage them well so that we can really dig in and solve some cases. So on the left are four instances where our officer did an amazing job of investigating cases. We solved a residential burglary series that took place in Providence. We used technology. We used Flock and some other investigative technology to solve those cases. We made a good drug arrest over in the Heritage District, someone who was selling drugs out of a out of a residence there and taking away from the quality of life for their neighbors. Again, another great example of community policing enhancing the quality of life for the people who live in our town. Internet crimes against children, we work with a task force that assists us with that. They do initial screening and then they send us cases to work that may originate in the city of Maricopa. And then last but not least is the story of Rags the dog. And we have a couple of photos there of our detectives with Rags. This is a really interesting case that came across our desk. And all police officers live for these kinds of really interesting cases. This case actually made national news back when it occurred almost a year ago. This case involves the theft of that dog in the state of Alabama. And that dog made its way to Florida and then to the city of Maricopa. And through a tip, we were able to locate the dog and run its chip through the computer. And sure enough, it was Rags the dog. And it's just an amazing story. Our detectives had a wonderful time working the case. What's even better is the owner flew from Alabama all the way to Phoenix and we met her at the airport and reunited her with Rags the dog. So, yeah, it's a really, really heartwarming story. And it's something that our police officers really take a lot of pride in being able to serve our serve our community members. There may be criminal charges forthcoming on that case, certainly in Alabama. So stay tuned. I'd like to talk a little bit about traffic. Traffic is one of the hot topics here in town. And we all know that three forty-seven is a hot topic and John Wayne Parkway is part of three forty-seven. So we added two people to our traffic unit this year, Corporal Josh Fox and Officer Greg Lockner. Of course, enhances our ability to go out there and do traffic enforcement. I really wanted to point out some of the relationships that we have intercity with our traffic unit. One of my goals was to unsilo the police department and to make sure that we're working with our in collaboration with our other city departments. And so we paid special attention to working with our Community Enrichment Department. Quinn does an amazing job. Quinn and his team do an amazing job of putting on events at Copper Sky. And we wanted to enhance that experience for our community members. And so we set about creating some really effective traffic plans for our events. Specifically, the Fourth of July is a very important event to me because it draws a large number of people to Copper Sky. And then when the fireworks are done, everybody's running out to their cars to see who can get there first to try to beat the traffic. So we devised a new traffic plan and I'd say it worked pretty well. Within an hour, I was walking through Copper Sky and there was nobody there but myself and Captain Judd. And we were looking at each other in amazement that we're able to get, oh, I don't know, ten to twelve thousand people out of Copper Sky in under an hour. So, the credit really goes to my people, the boots-on-the-ground folks that make that happen. Our DUI and street enforcement efforts continued with the help of a grant through the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. We also participate in task forces with other agencies in the area. Our area partnerships are very important. Officers oftentimes come in to help us here in Maricopa and sometimes we'll go over to those jurisdictions as well and work with them. We most recently partnered with the Gila River Indian Community Police Department to work a detail on the three forty-seven. So you might have seen us out there writing a few tickets. And then, of course, we helped with the highway reconstruction of three forty-seven Smith, Inc. intersection, which was quite a project and involved numerous different city departments. We met regularly. And we worked alongside the construction crews, our Public Works personnel, to really try to minimize the inconvenience felt by our community members in conjunction with that project. And we look forward to finishing up that project in collaboration with our Public Works Department so that we can really get things smooth through that intersection. Our school resource officers continue to do an amazing job engaging our students and our young people. We have partnerships with the Maricopa Unified School District and then one charter school. You'll see on the right, the SRO team by the numbers, one sergeant, five officers. We cover both high schools, both middle schools, one charter school. Those officers wrote seven hundred and forty-six reports. But more importantly, countless student contacts. Always looking to develop those relationships with our young people so that we can engage them and build trust with them and their families, which in turn helps them to pick up the phone when they see something suspicious and generate one of those calls for service. Because the community that is engaged, the community that trusts their police department, picks up the phone and gets the police going when they're needed. During the summertime, we try to keep our our young people engaged. We do a teen academy. They are exposed to all different parts of the police department. And my plan is to try to add to some of these things over the next summer. And then we also partner with some of our teen outreach organizations, like the Be Awesome Youth Coalition and Face of a Survivor and some of our domestic violence partners. Domestic violence touches the kids in our schools. They're not necessarily not necessarily victims of domestic violence, but it touches them nonetheless. And so we want to make sure that we are partnering with our our nonprofits and getting that information out to our students. Animal control, we stay busy with animal control, responding to over five hundred calls for service in reference to animals. And I think our one officer does an amazing job. We also cross-trained our police service aides to do some smaller, lower-level animal control items on the weekends so that we have seven-day-a-week coverage. Luke Zaccardi is our animal control officer and he does an amazing job contacting our community members who have issues with animals and trying to resolve them in collaboration with our community members. Hiring efforts. I'd like to tell you right now that I have absolutely zero vacancies at the police officer position for the police department. Zero vacancies. I cannot take credit for that. It is a collaborative effort between the council. Thank you very much for giving me those positions that I need each year. Thank you for the to the executive team who gives me the people when I need them so I can send them to academies and get them trained up early. And this is really a reflection of the efforts of our hiring unit, but also our Human Resources Department. Once again, the police department unsiloing and working with other city departments to effectively get things done that benefit the city. So, in two thousand twenty-four, we had over, we had close to three hundred and fifty people reply apply for a recruit position. And sixty-seven people applied to be laterals. We had three hundred and thirty-one people who applied to become public safety aides and we only have four. So, that's pretty amazing. We hired eight new recruits. We had two new laterals and we trained a total of six public safety aides. So even though we have four, we had six that that moved on. We were able to hire people very quickly and train them as well. And I'd like to note that that training program was developed from the ground up. It was there wasn't anything that existed. Our field training officer program adapted itself and trained those police service aides to give great service to our community. In fact, last year, our public safety aides handled two thousand six hundred and ninety-two calls in two thousand twenty-four. That's about eight percent of our calls for service. That's a pretty impressive number, if you ask me, for four people to handle. I'd also like to add that in collaborate in in combination with that, we also added online reporting, which was one of our goals to get done in two thousand twenty-four. We launched that in October of twenty-four and we averaged around twenty-four reports per month. And I think as people get more get adjusted to the online reporting process, it'll go up. During two thousand twenty-four, we trained a whole bunch of new police officers that you can see on the right. Eighteen police officers graduated, so to speak, from our field training program, which means they transitioned from the academy, they rode with field training officers in the field, and they became solo beat officer capable, which is the goal. It takes anywhere between ten and twelve months to get people from hired to solo beat officer. And so that's why it's important for me in collaboration with you and our executive team and a whole group of talented people who pull data for me to show why we need police officers when. That's important that we're right sizing. We also rolled out a brand-new FTO program. So, the FTO program that we had been using when I came here is the exact same program that I was trained on close to thirty years ago. It hadn't progressed really for police training. We had essentially been using an old model. And so Sergeant Cohen and her team did some research and they found a new way of training our police officers. And this new way really stresses teaching, coaching, and mentoring. So we're putting the training back in field training officer. And it completely, well, I think it's going to completely revolutionize the way that we train our police officers here in Maricopa. Volunteers, there's a lot of stuff that we couldn't do without our volunteers. As you see in the box on the right-hand side, they work a ton of events and help us out. And if you were to put a dollar value to the time that our volunteers spend with the police department, it comes to just over three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's a lot of time and it's a lot of value to the city. So, from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers publicly and let them know that we appreciate them and keep up the great work. And our police cadets, this is sort of our our farm team for police officers. This is how we get young people involved in law enforcement. And the idea is not necessarily to make the people, the kids in this program into police officers. What we're trying to do is to instill in them values and teach them lessons that will serve them well for the rest of their lives. Whether they decide to become police officers or not, their learning skills and responsibility and things that any employer would look moving forward as they transition from high school and college and then into adulthood. I would like to point out that every January, they go up to Chandler and they compete in a competition against agencies that are much, much larger than the city of Maricopa. Large agencies from California send multiple teams to this competition because it's pretty well-known on the West Coast. And our cadets do well. See, they brought home some some hardware for us to display in the lobby of the police department. And this program is doing well and is thriving right now. So, I just wanted to point that out as part. This ties us also into our community policing efforts and teaching kids the right thing. We do have several partnerships with other law enforcement agencies. We partner with Pinal County Sheriff's Office for to investigate major collisions. We partner with them for special weapons and tactics. And later on this year, the Arizona State Legislature has mandated that we partner with other agencies to investigate critical incidents such as officer-involved shootings. The Pinal County Sheriff's Department approached us and asked us if we wanted to take a leadership role on the Pinal Regional Special Investigations Unit. That speaks very, very highly of our police department. And we are already setting the standard for those investigations in Pinal County. In fact, we launched the team six months early. And we have had great success thus far with partnering with the Pinal County Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, and other stakeholders that help us investigate these critical incidents. We like to partner with people in the community. And I think these three illustrations are great illustrations of the way that we engage our community actively. Every Year Against Abuse puts an angel tree in our lobby. And this year, our angel tree was pink. And it's pink because it was donated by a community member who secured it at the Against Abuse Gala. And I thought it was very appropriate for it to be in the lobby of the police department so that we could stand united with Against Abuse and then also partner with them to place angels on the tree so that we could get gifts to needy families in Maricopa. And the fire department partnered us, partnered on this with this, did an amazing job. Seventy-five Christmas gifts went out to needy families in Maricopa. And I think that next year, we're going to have even more angels on that tree for sure. The Girl Scouts reached out to us and they asked if we wanted to partner with them on a Teddy Bear and Blanket project. I went to their to their gathering along with K nine Karma and Officer Gomez. And Karma was a big hit. Wasn't me, it's Karma. They're all about all about the dog. They're all about, all about the dog. And the Girl Scouts got to, got to spend a little bit of time with our K9. But more importantly, we got to engage with them and really see the caring that they were putting into these cards, collecting these blankets. And then they, later on, they delivered them to the police department. There's our local Girl Scout troop on the day that they actually delivered them to the PD. And then we turn around and give those items out to people who are involved in, in critical and traumatic incidents. And then I'd like to give a quick shout-out to our community engagement off, person Jim Dibanesia. He's here all the time, counsel, supporting us. Jim led the charge this year for the You Are Not Alone program. We have quite a few people here in Maricopa who just don't get out. There's seniors who don't get out of their houses. And so we thought it would be important to engage with them and to visit them and make sure that they know that we're here for them. And then just general community engagement at events. We go to every event and I'm super proud of that. I attend the events both on and off duty so that I can get the full experience. I have a great time working the events. We did Red Ribbon Week. Shop with a Cop is sort of our premier Christmas event and is really embraced by our community. And we're just always there to support our thriving community. I think that's a great photograph of our officers walking at the Wild West Music Fest a couple of years ago. And that American flag just is, just signifies everything that we believe in as a police department. With that, I'm glad to take questions.
Mr.?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor Goodman, thank you, Mayor Goodman. I just promoted you, sorry about that.[1089.65][1089.65](LAUGHTER). Chief Goodman.
I just became an elected official.[1093.33][1093.33](LAUGHTER).
Chief Goodman, thank you for your report and wonderful, wonderful news. Many of us, may or may not have seen in January this, this year, the company Vivint ranked Maricopa as the safest small town in Arizona for 2024. It says a ton about what you and your officers are doing for us on the streets every single day. So I just want to express gratitude to you and to your team and to your staff for a phenomenal job. Thank you for making a difference. Thank you for the lives that you touch. Every individual that I've ever met that's had an incident or a, a contact point with the police officers speak highly of their professionalism, their ability to help, their willingness to help. And we are just so proud of the department that, that you're ahead of. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gettle.
Councilmember. I meet monthly with Colt, the, the union rep lead. And I, I do understand that you're very good at maintaining good relations with your union. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, sure.
Great job. You know, we know these numbers, we see them all year and we read them. You give us reports and you tell us what's going on. We, you're always open and available to us to, for us to call you and ask you questions. It's always great to have a good working relationship. So thank you so much for bringing this information to us so that we can share it with the community. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Nice, Mayor.
Please, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, I don't mind. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you talk a little bit about what it's like for your officers to serve in a community that's so changing and growing compared to a city that's pretty stagnant and things kind of just stay the same? What are some of the challenges or things that they encounter?
Well, thank you for that question. I actually use that as one of my hugest recruiting tools. I tell people that come in for a chief's interview with me who are prospective employees for the police department, I tell them that you could easily go work at Phoenix or Mesa or Chandler or any one of the other agencies in the valley that are bigger and maybe at this point, offer more specialty units perhaps than we do here at Maricopa. But truly, something that attracted me to the city also attracts our new recruits to the city. And that is an opportunity to truly make a difference and truly have a legacy here. And that doesn't exist at cities that are large and built out. I also tell them that at the Maricopa Police Department, you're not going to just be a number. I make it a point to learn the name, the first names of all of my officers. I make it a point to meet with them regularly, to wander the halls, sort of management by walking around, becoming engaged with them. And I tell them that you're, that if you're selected to work at the city of Maricopa, because we have that luxury, we can select great people. I tell them, this, you're becoming part of a culture. You're becoming part of a family. I spend more time with the men and women of the Maricopa Police Department than I do with my own family. And I tell them, we would like to welcome you here with open arms, but at the same time, we have very high expectations and we need you to perform in a certain way and we need you to, to police our community to our community standard. We make that very clear to them. That is what challenges them. That is what engages them. They know that everywhere they go, they represent this badge that in my, that I tell them, it's on loan to you. This badge is on loan to me from the, from the people of the city of Maricopa. I tell them, this badge is on loan to you, as are the patches on your shoulders. So go out and represent accordingly. So I think their challenge is really meeting that expectation. We coached them along the entire way, but also the reward is having that legacy that you can see years from now.
Chief, thank you. I don't know what it's like to lead men and women who are going out and putting their lives on the line. And it takes a really amazing person to be that leader. And so I want to thank you for your leadership and what that must entail and Chief Potassia as well because that's quite a high bar. And so thank you so much for your leadership.
Thanks, Councilmember. I will say that I don't do it alone. I have a very strong team standing behind me who are equally committed to the success of the police department. Chief Potassia and his personnel are a key partner for us in public safety. They support us without question, unequivocally. So having that strong relationship with our public safety partners and fire makes us just that much stronger. So thank you for, thank you for that, but I can't take all the credit, just a little bit of it. The credit really goes to the men and women who do this job day in and day out on the street. And I have the privilege of joining them occasionally.
Councilmember Nora.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, Chief, you stole my thunder because I was just going to mention that we are so lucky to have a public safety personnel in this city, both the fire and the police that work so well together. Because in a lot of cities, they, they don't get as long as good. We'll just leave it at that. But here in Maricopa, it truly is a team and I had the opportunity to witness that. And it honestly, it almost brought me to tears seeing both of those departments work together and care for one another and just the, the teamwork and, and it's just amazing that you guys, it's almost like you're one, the way you work together. And that makes us a safer city. It does. When there's that level of collaboration and that level of teamwork between our fire and police, and it's why we're the safest small town or whatever stat that Mr. Gettle gave us, that was fantastic, has a lot to do with that. Because if you didn't work together as well, you know, it, it doesn't work as good. But I do want to thank you for what a great presentation. Since the day you've got here, you've been a great asset to the city of Maricopa. And thank you to your officers on the streets. And I echo what Councilwoman Lehman said earlier, our hearts and thoughts and prayers are with you and your officers and thank you for keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to go, then I'll leave the last word for you if you don't mind.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Chief, I agree with everything that's been said so far. You have come to this community and taken the concept that this, you're our family. We are all part of one family. And that's what we need in order to be supportive of one another and to understand that there, when there's a need, that there's a team there that's ready to help. And I feel very comfortable with the men and women of the Maricopa Police Department and the men and women of the Fire Department as well. And as a matter of fact, I have a personal connection. Every morning when I drop my grandson off at Maricopa High School, there's a SRO park right there watching as the young people come in and out. They may, they may not be paying attention to that, but I am. And I wave and I don't know whether they're seeing me wave or not, but I wave every day because I'm happy to see that person there. And so thank you very much for instilling that kind of family-oriented policing that makes us feel safe as members of the council, but also as a community member, it makes us feel safe. So thank you very much for what you do and thank you for letting us know so that we can share it with the community as a whole.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So Chief Goodman, I just want to echo many of the wonderful words. I really want you to understand, as I know you already do, how much these presentations each year matter to us. Because it gives us a status of what happened last year. It tells us, have we seen more crime, less crime? What type of crime is it? Is it violent crime? Is it much less in terms of what kind of crimes such as stealing or things to that nature? Or is it driving offenses? It's just great information. And I remember all the way back to the day, we talked about celebrating our 20th anniversary for our Fire Department, which is magnificent. And I remember back to the day when we brought in our first police chief and we've grown in so many ways. It's amazing and I, and I am very proud too of the city of Maricopa and how well we've handled public safety. But it's an example for me of the quality of individuals that we have in every single department. So I totally echo what you said in regards to, it takes a team, it takes our leadership and staff, it takes all of our employees, it takes our city council. It's amazing. One thing I want to make sure that the people understand is that I receive, and I'm sure other council members do as well, I receive quite a few emails about traffic within town, the concerns on various intersections and even 347, many emails on that. And whenever I forward these concerns to our public safety chiefs, they are sure to get back to these residents very quickly, giving them all the stats, helping them understand, taking into account their concerns on various intersections, and this is true for Public Works as well. We want the community to be a very safe community. And I think that we have the right people who are leading the way in making sure that that happens. So Chief, since you're standing right there, I want to make sure you understand how much I appreciate your willingness to answer all of those emails that I get, that I send to you to appropriately answer. And same for Chief Potassia and our Public Works Director and really all of our staff. So I just want to thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Goodman. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we go to the executive session, although there is no executive session at this time. So this concludes the council meeting for tonight.